Hello, I'm gonna go ahead and call the June 22nd Planning Commission meeting to order. We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Klostermeyer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Everyone can stand and push your hand over your heart.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Sadly, this is Commissioner Klostermeyer's last meeting with us. She'll be moving on to bigger and better things than the Newport Beach Planning Commission. But I think staff wanted to say a few words, and I know I'm speaking for me and some of my colleagues here. Commissioner Klostermeyer, your professionalism, your real estate IQ, and the way you've managed up here has been top-notch, and we've really enjoyed spending time with you. Kim?
Very good, thank you Chair Elmore. Sarah, it's been wonderful working with you the past four years. We do have a certificate of recognition here that the department put together for you, but I want, on behalf of Mr. Jurges and myself, I want you to know that we've really enjoyed working with you on the commission. You've been very thoughtful in your deliberations and good in your questions, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. And we had hoped that you would stay on for another four years, but we understand other duties take you elsewhere. And so, but we do wish you well, and just if you need anything, planning and zoning-wise, feel free, you've got friends here in the planning department, and just let us know if you need anything. Thank you so much. But I'll give you this here.
All right. Yeah? Please go on.
I've really enjoyed the last four years on this planning commission. I have really enjoyed getting to know each and every one of the commissioners, and I appreciate the support of city council four years ago to this appointment. I work in commercial real estate development as a profession and entitle many projects with cities. And I will have to say that working with the staff in the city of Newport Beach has been the most professional city that I have ever worked with. And I've really enjoyed working with you the last four years. And it's sad to move on. It was a tough decision, but I think it's time for me, and just thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on. Staff, roll call, please.
All commissioners are present this evening.
Okay, great. We'll move on to public comment. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the planning commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Thank you Chair Elmore and members of the planning commission. My name is Jim Mosher, and speaking of professionalism, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Institute for Local Government. They're a California nonprofit that supports the activities of the League of California Cities and the Association of Counties and Special Districts. Among their other many things that they do, they publish something called a Planning Commissioner Handbook. And for many years, I found it difficult to find a copy online, but they seem to be promoting it once again. So it's readily available if you Google Planning Commissioner Handbook. And in fact, I believe tomorrow they're holding an all-day webinar to educate planning commissioners about it. I recommend you look at it, and particularly, I call your attention to the section giving their view on the appropriateness of ex parte communications and site visits when you're reviewing a quasi-judicial matter such as a permit application. You'll find that in the very last section called engaging your community. And within that, it's in the chapter Meetings and Procedures, and Part 5 of that, Key Considerations for Quasi-Judicial Proceedings. Contrary to what you might think is the ideal practice, they recommend against both of those. And if you engage in an ex parte communication or a site visit, they recommend not only that you disclose that it happened, but also inform your fellow commissioners of exactly what you learned from that communication or site visit, so that everybody has the same information influencing their decision. I think it's worth reading. I recommend it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, moving on. Staff, requests for continuances?
Chair Elmore, there are no requests for continuance.
Okay. We'll move on to consent items. Item number one, the meeting minutes of May 18th, 2023. Have a motion or a second?
All motion to approve with Mr. Mosher's clarifying edits.
Give me a second.
Second.
Call for a vote.
The motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Lowry abstaining.
Great. Okay, moving on to public hearing items. Item number two, Aronotic Ford Soil Vapor Remediation Appeal. This is near 94 Hartford Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I will have to accuse myself on this issue. I have property nearby.
Great. I have not opened the public hearing, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make a quick comment. This item was continued from our May 18th meeting because the commission had additional questions for the Homeowners' Association as to how the location was chosen. I'd like to focus this continuance to new information. Appreciate it if we don't be redundant. I think that this body felt that the last presentation was very detailed, that we think you're very qualified, and we believe the work needs to be done. So again, new information, please. And to hear from the HOA would be appropriate. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Thank you Chair Elmore, commissioners. My name is Jenny Tran. I'm the Assistant Planner for this project, so I'd just like to give a really brief recap before I turn it over to the applicant. So I say that this is a continuance of an appeal of the zoning administrator's decision approving the limit-term permit for a soil vapor extraction treatment system. This item was heard on May 18th and was continued in order to further address the concerns raised regarding safety and the alternative locations, and for the applicant to provide more input with the HOA board regarding the decisions made for the alternative locations. So this is a continuance from the previous planning commission hearing, and the applicant has provided a presentation to discuss further those concerns that were brought up during the last hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? No? Commissioners? None? Okay. Any ex parte communications? I'll start with Commissioner Bartow.
None.
I met with the applicant and had a conversation about opportunities for other locations, and I also had a conversation with the appellant.
None for me.
I had a telephone conversation with a representative of the applicant.
None for me.
I met with a representative of the applicant as well.
Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. This will be the time for the applicant to go ahead and make their presentation. And again, we strongly urge you to just keep it to new information, because we remembered everything else you guys have said.
All right. Thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about this today. My name is Ken Connor. I work with WSP, Earth and Environment. I also have today with me Candace Jansen-Marsen and Emily Miller, also from WSP. Another person that we have today is Jessica Law. Can you come up for a second, Jessica?
I just wanted to, I know last time you guys had questions regarding our authority and why we don't just say, "Put the system here." So the Santa Ana Regional Water Board, we work, we're an agency under California EPA, so we're a state agency, and we operate under the California Water Code. And that code gives us authority to require investigations and to require cleanup. And after that, we cannot say, "You must use this system and put it here." That's outside of our authority and puts us at the risk of a lawsuit if we do. So we rely on the engineers, since it does need to be stamped for that. So just wanted to provide that clarification regarding our authority. And if you have any other questions on that, let me know.
Also tonight, we have Enrique Sanchez, who is the president from the Bay Ridge Homeowners' Association. Enrique, can you come up for a second?
Hello.
And?
First, I'd like to apologize for not showing up at the May 18th. I do volunteer not only for our HOA but for other organizations, and sometimes the times conflict. So no disrespect was meant here or to the homeowners. I know this is a very important matter, but it was optional at that point whether to show up or not, and I opted to go to another meeting. So...
Thank you Enrique. We also have Gail Weinberg from the HOA as well. I'm not going to go through all 30 slides, you know, based on what we had just talked about. I do want to say upfront, some of the key points that we'd like to make tonight or this evening are that the LTP was needed due to aesthetic issues because of the eight-foot step back. WSP is actually the owner of the LTP application, although the HOA had to sign off on it. The HOA's input was considered, but it really was engineering implementation and power availability that determined the location that we have. WSP Ford has performed extensive community outreach over these last five years that we've been involved with all of this work. And most important, the project is needed in an urgent manner, because there is vapor intrusion that is existing, that is happening in at least 22 homes and maybe more. And SVE is the only remediation technique that we have to address the risk at this point in time. This is what the area looks like that we're looking to remediate. We're, let's leave it at that. This is the general outline of where we're going with this. I'm just gonna breeze through these. Some of the responses that we had from the last time were that the appellant and a few other individuals had indicated that saving parking spaces was a greater priority than the appellant's health and safety. That just was not the priority at all. The reason why, and I'll go through this in a minute in one of the slides, but the reason why all of the alternatives that we were looking at that involved parking spaces were not used is clearly an issue of the power drop situation and the location from that. And that emanated from over 18 months of going through over and over again with SoCal Edison even to this day. So the only location that we can have the power drop is in this one area, and the only location that works for us for the location of the building is behind the building at 94 Hartford. For Alternative 4, which is that location, which is in the northwest corner, as I said before, the power drop location, the voltage drop across the distance, the additional trenching that was going to be necessary, the utility conflicts that we're running up against, the additional depth and width of the trenching, and the need to place more utilities within the trenches, and I'll show a picture of this in a minute, all led to choosing that one particular location. And again, the power drop location ended up being the most decisive effect on the choice of location. If we could have gotten power off of Bison Avenue, if we could have gotten it in any other location closer to the northwest on the parking spaces, we probably would have opted for the parking spaces. But we can't. That would take years to get in place from what we're hearing from SoCal Edison. So this is what the Alternative 4 looks like. And if you look at the start of the yellow line all the way to the right of the slide, that's where the power would be coming in. You would have to loop around on Hartford Drive all the way up to the northwest corner. That length would cause us to have to have bigger conductors involved. We'd have to have two going in that direction, and we'd also have to have the SVE piping involved with the two. And those three items would have made the trenching much wider. We would run the risk of undermining the foundations that are there. But also, we would have a tremendous amount of utility conflicts. Whereas the location that we have, the power doesn't have to loop throughout the whole community, it just goes directly to about the same location where you're seeing right now at the yellow start of the line. We consider all of these items and note that none of them have to do with the parking spaces themselves. It wasn't as if someone dictated to us that the parking spaces could not be used, and that was it. We had to still keep everything within the matrix and throughout One last item, we keep running into this idea of the proximity of the building. And the entire issue with the proximity of the building has everything to do with where the exhaust is on the building. That's the point of compliance, and that will be determined in the air district permit, which is a separate matter from this one. But just because the building is three feet away from another building doesn't mean that it's inherently unsafe. And we keep going through this, but that's going to be the telling part, is the next part on the permit regarding the air district. The HOA is obviously here tonight, so if there are questions, we'll go through that. And then the rest of this is just the rest of the permits that we'll be going through. I also want to indicate that there is community support. This is something that the other members in the HOA, the other residents that are there, particularly the ones that are being impacted by the vapor intrusion issues, they're all for this project happening, and they understand that the location is the location that it has to be in. And with that, I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation.
Great, thank you. While I have you there, do you agree to the recommended conditions of approval?
Correct, yes, we do.
All right. I'll bring it back to the commission. I think we'll probably have some questions. Maybe I'll start with Commissioner Langford. Do you have any questions of the applicant?
I guess the reason for this continuance was to hear a little bit more from the HOA president and their deliberation. So is this now a good time to talk to them about that? So Enrique?
Yes.
I know our body was interested in the process in which you chose this location, but you know, just your authority over your residents, just kind of overview of your HOA, how it's set up, how it elects its members, who's representative, your president, is there anybody else on your executive committee? I think it would be helpful just to give us a brief overview of how you guys deliberate.
You know, I can't compare it to other HOAs. I don't know. Ours is just five members, five residents, and topics are brought up. We discuss them not only with the people that have concerns, but then we discuss it among ourselves. If there's any question, we go to our attorneys and make a decision. And we, none of us are scientists, none of us are, I'm a retired cop. I can't be that smart, right? So I just, we just try and do common sense stuff and just try and figure out what's the best. And what I understand is the best is looking at the science and the information that has come over the last five years and seeing and going to these meetings and attending, asking questions, understanding how the progression got us to this point. And so I actually do live in one of the residents where there is some intrusion. And it is a concern, but I understand without alarm that there is a solution. And so we're just trying to get this resolved as quickly as possible. So I don't know if that answered your question completely.
Just a couple of follow-up. Are you popularly elected by the other residents in your community?
Yes.
And how long, and same thing with the rest of your board? All of you are popularly elected by the residents of your community? And how long have you served as president or on the board?
Since 2019.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Okay. Commissioner Harris?
Thanks for coming out. Appreciate you coming.
Sure, thank you.
Can you, are you able to go back to the one site plan that kind of shows where it is from above, though, the aerial? So there seem to be parking spaces in the southwest corner there, or the southeast corner. Why was that location not used or not considered? And then also, can you expand on what the actual decision made? I know WSP probably, you know, presented the best location, but what was the deliberation like for the board? Was there a vote? How did that, you know, take place?
We did hear from the residents. We have given wood and now WSP support after understanding the process and what's going on and what's at risk here. There were proposals to put stations in that location, and the HOA would have been willing to approve that, because if that's what it takes, that's what we're willing to do. But we had quite a bit of backlash from the residents at the HOA meetings. That is an impacted corner, and so, you know, as it is, there are several people that have to walk quite a bit to get to their residences. We have a lot of two-story residences, or I'm sorry, second-story residences. And a lot of the people living in our community, I'd say the majority are probably 40 and over. And, you know, just the added burden of asking them to walk to the extended other side of the complex with the groceries or whatever, I think just alarmed people. And that's what we kept hearing back, is it's just too inconvenient to have to do that extra walk or find a parking spot that's not close to their own home. So we heard that, but at the end of the day, it turned out that that didn't seem to be the best spot to put the building in anyways.
How many, do you know how many total units?
168.
And how many two-bedroom, one-bedroom, three-bedroom?
I know there's 60, about 60 C units, and those are the upstairs-downstairs units. D-units would be the full townhouse units.
Fifty.
Fifty, 50 of those. The rest, the A-units and the B-units are actually second-story units, meaning you have to climb stairs to get to your unit, and those aren't as infected or, not infected, impacted by the vapors.
And then how many units or which ones have garages?
Well, everybody has a garage, but not everybody has an attached garage. So if you have a D-unit, you have an attached double garage. If you have an A or B unit, you have a detached garage. If you have a C unit, you have one attached and one detached garage.
And if you have, do you have any three-bedroom units?
The D-unit.
The D-unit, that big one. Do they have a two-car, one-car?
A two-car garage.
Two-car? And then the smaller ones probably have a one-car?
Some of the A-units have a double garage.
Okay. So in theory, you should be parked just about with the garages.
In theory, but if I could, Gail is who's here, she lives, how far is your garage from your?
Around the corner.
Yeah, it has to be a good 30 yards away, right? Is that fair? About 30 yards away from our home.
But the A-unit?
The A-units have one garage, but usually double, double units, or double garages.
No.
No, there's, the other, oh, I'm sorry, the B-units are double, yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Any more questions? Commissioner Rosin, any questions? Commissioner Bartow, any questions?
Yeah, I've got a few. Again, thanks for coming out.
Sure.
You mentioned, and this is actually probably for you, he mentioned that when I look at one of the initial feasibilities, there's a configuration with vapor extraction back when it was kind of more multiple locations. And I see a setup where, I think where you were just talking, between maybe Unit 101 and 88 or something like that, in that southern corner. I understand that there's an impact on parking. I think part of, maybe at least what I was feeling at the last meeting, is that to a certain degree, it feels like the HOA, recognizing there's a problem for the whole community, seems to have put a lot of the impact for the cleanup on just a few, very few locations. And when I look at the impact on parking, that feels like a more distributed impact. So that was kind of more of a, I wanted to understand better kind of what was going on there. Now, I understand there's engineering questions. Now, in the configuration where you have five separate vapor extraction facilities, and I forget the letter, but was the issue that there's not a footprint that would allow the whole site just pulling from that one location there? I see it's on country clubs, so your conduit to power should be pretty minimal compared to where it is now. So I guess I don't want to redesign your project, but I'm just, I'm really trying to understand more how the relationship between, again, the impact on the, you know, the general good of improving the environmental quality for the whole neighborhood seems to have been allocated out. And I'm not clear if that was more of an HOA decision or if that was more engineering-driven.
So first of all, it was completely engineering-driven. Secondly, when you were talking about the five different locations, the problem there is that each one of those locations was just to take care of a very small number of extraction wells, okay? And there wasn't enough space, obviously, in any one of those locations to draw in all of the wells and have a treatment unit big enough for that. And then the other item, which is, again, something dealing with the parking spaces but is an engineering issue, is the amount of conduit, the amount of runs that we would have to do from the power drop location was going to make it prohibitive, because Hartford might be wide enough to do what we need to do, but it also has tremendous number of utilities in it. And you go to some of these side roads, these side areas, the utility conflicts actually go up, because there is sewer there, there is water there. So it was clearly just an engineering issue that if we were to do something like this, we'd have to do deeper and wider trenches and also resolve all of the utility conflicts.
Yeah, I follow that. I guess I'm asking more, as I think it was asked before, just utilizing that southern corner where it looks like there's more parking than was being proposed in this configuration. It looks like it was maybe two or three spots rather than, I'm guessing there was more.
We need a minimum of four or five in order to be doing this. And just from the building that we're putting in, the size of it, which we can't get any smaller, I don't believe that there was enough, in fact, I'm sure there wasn't enough space in that southeast corner for doing this.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you. I believe the appellant is here. Would the appellant like to say a few words or make a presentation?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Amy Santella, and I'm the homeowner of 94 Hartford Drive. We would like to thank the planning commissioners and the city staff for their time tonight to listen to our concerns. And just before I start, I just wanted to comment on a couple of the things that were just said. The original proposal of the five separate locations was the first proposal that WSP put out. So engineering-wise, that's the first one that they presented to the entire Bay Ridge community. That was then declined by the HOA due to parking. community that was then declined by the HOA due to parking spots. So that wasn't an alternative analysis after this one was planned. That was the original one that was planned, that was then later turned down. So I do believe that that is something to continue to explore because, like I mentioned, engineering-wise, that was the first one that was ever presented to the Bay Ridge community. And as far as parking spots go, last time we talked about, you know, different parking alternatives, it's actually an HOA policy to park in your garage. If you do have one car, you park that car in your garage. So that is the policy for our community. Next, I would like to state that we have never objected to the location of, we have, we have objected, I'm sorry, to the location of the SVE system three feet away from our home, but we have never opposed the remediation. So I think there was some confusion with some of the resident letters that were sent in that said we were trying to delay their cleanup. And we have always stated in writing that we do not oppose the cleanup. We actually spoke with Ken Conner yesterday, and we asked, you know, if it's so urgent for these 22 homes to have this SVE system in place, what is Ford doing for them now? Do they have to be relocated for health and safety reasons? And Ken stated that no, the current remediation of the air purifiers are what's the mitigation in place right now, and that's okay for them. And then they're also going to be putting in some sub-slab depressurization devices. But as far as the health and safety risks for the delays of this system, they're actually safe to be in their home right now. Secondly, we have had extensive discussions with WSP and the Water Board regarding our concerns, despite their claims of not meeting in the most recent correspondents. Personally, I've had multiple phone and email conversations with WSP and Jessica Law, including an almost hour discussion with Ken Conner on March 2nd, phone conversation with Candace VP on May 16th, and multiple emails in between. We also met this week with Ken and Mike Barnes to discuss the current state, and they answered a lot of our questions. Ken did state that he truly understands where we're coming from and appreciates the appeal process. Regarding the HOA Board, we have sent all of our appeal correspondences via email without any response. The only response we received was on May 19th, when we got an email back saying that the Board noted that the City of Newport Beach has the information and will make the final decision based on all of the information submitted. When we later followed up with a comprehensive letter in June explaining the May 18th meeting and with our request for an update on the continuance with WSP, looking at the alternate locations, we still have yet to receive a response. On June 8th, there was a community meeting at Bay Ridge run by WSP, and a resident asked the Board for an update on the continuance, to which the HOA President stated, this came by recommendation. If I understand, they calculated the system, and the system runs efficiently in that location. That's what it came down to. So this does not appear to show any work on the continuance voted by the Planning Commission to look at alternate site feasibility. I also asked WSP and the City Planner on June 1st for an update on the continuance, with no mention of an alternate location analysis, and instead, a new rendering of the building still next to 94 Hartford Drive was sent to me. It's also important to note that we still have not received an example of a residential treatment system. We have asked WSP for months to provide us with an evidence-based example, which they still cannot show us. Per Jessica Law from the Water Board on the 68 Community Meeting, the Regulatory Agency/Waterboard, we always want to see the actual data. Enrique also just mentioned about following the science. But we, as the residents and the homeowners, still have not been provided with any of this data. And then I just have a couple of pictures. So you can see here that they, the examples that they did give us were two commercial facilities in Orange County, the closest residents were 500 feet away, and then campus cleaners, the closest residents were 100 feet away. And then this is the one example of a residential system that they sent us. It is from a vacant shutdown military base in Northern California. And it's truly appalling that this is the example that they sent, that they said this is a residential treatment facility. We truly hope that the city will support its residents in wanting to see evidence-based research and data before agreeing to place a 240-square-foot building three feet from our home to clean up the soil contaminated by Ford Motor Company. Thank you. And my husband will continue. Thanks.
Here it comes. Baby and all. Hello. Please state your name. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Solomita, and I'm one of the residents at 94 Hartford. Okay. So when our complaints were first received in January, this is the alternative analysis that we got in return. And I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. I know you said don't rehash much. But basically, we made our complaints known, and up to that point, we were just hearing that it's simply going behind our house due to parking. And then after we complained, we got this alternative analysis. And the red boxes are the options that were deemed infeasible. And then at the community meeting on June 8th, we actually were notified that any changes of the location would extend it for about two, two and a half years. And that's the first time we were hearing about that. Now, for the infeasibilities, I put the definition of it, not possible to do easily or conveniently. And I put that up there because up to this point, infeasible has kind of seemed like impossible, which it's not. Just because it's hard to do doesn't mean we can't do it. And then also, it's not our job as the residents to take the, take the full burden just to make it easier for the company that basically made the mistake in the first place. This was one of the options on Bison Avenue. Now, there's about 40 feet in between the retaining wall and the roadway. I don't understand how a 10-foot by 20-foot building with about 30 feet of space would impact the moratorium on Bison at all. I don't know if it was touched on. I'm sorry, I was outside for most of the meeting. Also, the city is in charge of the moratorium. I don't understand why, if this is based on the safety of the residents, why the city can't waive the restrictions for the moratorium simply for this one project. And I believe the moratorium has about two years, a little, a little over two years left until it expires. And then another proposed location, right here on the corner of Bison and Country Club. The only reason that I could see was the, it would require significant grading and potentially impact stability of the existing retaining wall. I, I find it hard to believe that no one's ever put a building next to a retaining wall on a slight incline, or a pretty decent incline, but still. Now, also, in the first Planning Commission meeting, I believe it was stated by the Planning Commissioner that it would possibly obstruct the roadway or view of the motorists passing by. It, it, there's plenty of room to put it in this corner. It's not close to a house. The only thing it's close to is the retaining wall. These are the proposed locations due to parking, and I understand some of them, I wouldn't put it there either because it'd be the same problem. It's right next to a building in the one, one location, so we would just be passing the buck to them. However, one of the locations that's not pictured, I believe it's Brittany and Hartford, right by the front gate, there are two parking spots to the left on the west side of the little island here, and three parking spots to the right. Now, a 20-by-10-foot building could go within those two spots or within the three if they needed a little more room. If, and that's to scale, a 20-foot by 10-foot building right there. It would take up those two spots, but if you reconfigure it a little bit, you can park two cars parallel to it. You don't lose any parking spots. If they need more room, put it in the three spots, you lose one parking spot. So I understand parking spots are at a minimum in our area. I don't want to make light of it because it, they are important. But like I said, you don't have to lose any spots. Also, there are, I believe, two, maybe three wells directly, directly around this island. So I don't think the power drop would be an issue at all. I'm not 100% sure. And next, the, another option would be to completely reconfigure that whole island. Put five parking spots in there. You're not losing any parking spots. The building could go right there behind it. Also, you might possibly gain one or two spots if you want to put a parking spot to the left or the right of the actual building. And now I know some of the concerns by other residents were basically curb appeal of the building. They can make it look like a garage. There's plenty of garages in the area. They could actually make it a garage, and then to appease pretty much everybody at the end, we have an extra garage. This is the proposed location. I know we already saw pictures, but this is the proposed location right behind our house. That's the render that they showed you earlier. Now, we, we said infeasible for a lot of places for a bunch of reasons, but this one's too close to a home. It's three feet rather than eight feet like it's supposed to be. It's too close to the sidewalk. It's pretty much touching the sidewalk. Too close to a waterman. I know at that last meeting, someone stated that the city's compromising by putting it there. Encroachment agreement now needed. You'd have to remove one, maybe two 50-year-old pine trees. I know that's not the biggest deal in the world, but one of the proposed locations, one of the issues with one of those options was because you have to remove mature landscaping, something along those lines. It's directly outside our main living area. You have to remove the air conditioner, and it's on a slab rather than actually fastened to the ground. And then I believe, like my wife said, there's been no examples of this being this close to a residence. And then I, I did want to just say thank you to everybody. Regardless of how, how you decide to go on this matter, I feel like we actually were heard, and I genuinely want to thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the appellant? Look down the line. Any questions of the appellant? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment. Does anybody from the audience wish to speak on this item? Please state, please state your name and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Enrique Sanchez. Briefly, the HOA has always been in cooperation with WSP or Wood. This is an issue that we're trying to remediate. And so our attention has always been towards the best for the neighborhood, whatever that looks like. And at the end of the day, if we had to put this building right in the middle of a parking lot because it's the best for the neighborhood, we would do that. But that's not the case here. And the other case is that this is looking at a year. This is a temporary permit. This building is going to probably be, be there for a year, and then it's going to be taken down. And it's, this isn't about safety. That's already been resolved. This is about aesthetics, looking out a window and seeing a roof line out of one window in a residence, when that might be an inconvenience. But there's 22 families that are being impacted right now, and we'd like to get this resolved as quickly as possible. Yeah, we could redraw this, we could find another location, but we'd have to be impacted for another two years. That's 22 families. I think when you put it in perspective of looking out your window, one of your windows at a roof line for a year, as compared to 22 families that would have to wait two more years and be impacted, I, I think those are the scales we really need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Leslie Pratt, and I live at 96 Hartford. And just real quickly, I want to say that I think in good faith, the Planning Commission granted a continuance. All they asked was for the HOA to present reasons why they deemed this was the only spot. The HOA has made no effort to contact any of the residents, residents involved. And so I think in good faith, I'm just hoping that you'll consider all the reasons we've given and make the best decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I can rebuttal. I can, please.
I can come back. I'm going to come back to the WSP. I'll let them. Applicant, do you want to respond to any of the comments that have been made?
Yes, yes, I do. So one of the comments that was made regarding that there were five locations, and that was the preferred alternative at one point in time, that was also at a time when we thought that we would have a power drop location closer to those five locations. And that did not work out because of COVID, because of the situation that we had with SoCal Edison. They did not meet with us for over 10 months, although we were asking them throughout it. And when we got to that point where they met with us, this was the only power drop location that we had that was available to us. So, so that's number one. Number two, with respect to the idea that whatever is happening with the air purifying units, or even if we put in sub-slab depressurization underneath the homes, the 22 homes, and there's probably more than that, even though those items are in place right now, those are mitigation items. Those are not long-term remediation items. They can be easily overcome by differences, by changes in what's happening in the subsurface. There could be more vapor coming in that would overcome what's going on with the APUs. The, the plume itself could move. So those were always meant to be one, maybe two years in, in, in length in order to get to the SVE system. And Jessica may want to, you know, talk about this at some point in time. But the idea that we would just continue with the APUs for an extended period of time or even another two years is just not feasible. And what's going to happen is we're going to have to put in more and more sub-slab depressurization units throughout the, the entire area, again, just to mitigate for a very short period of time. So the remediation side of this is the only way to go. The SVE is the only way to go to ensure that we've lowered the risk sufficiently for not only the short term, but for the long-term exposure that the vapor intrusion involves. Lastly, we went through a very thorough analysis of each one of the locations. And because of the power drop location that we had to use, which is across the street from all of this, whenever we would have the system be someplace else, whether it was the northeast corner, the northwest corner, this, any place else, even the other five locations, in each and every one of those scenarios, we ran into an engineering problem and a utility clearance problem, and also a problem with respect to the size and the depth of the trenches. So I, I just wanted to put that out there, that this really is the only location in order to get the SVE system running. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and in one second bring it back to staff, but I had a couple of questions real quick before I did of the applicant, if you want to come back up. Didn't have an opportunity. And thank you for that explanation. So just so I can understand the order of magnitude of the events that took place, at a, at a point in time, you offered up to the HOA multiple options for, for the location of this. Is that correct?
Correct. And how many? And we had, we had a series of community meetings in which we talked with them, here is what we're looking at, and this is what the alternatives will look like, and including the, the, the parking spaces and the construction times, which we have not talked about here at, so far. But yes, it was very thorough.
Thank you. And then at a certain point in time, the HOA, I assure you, meeting minutes, made a, took a vote on the viable locations. Is that correct?
No, no. Throughout the entire process, whenever we would hear, we would prefer not to have these parking spaces impacted, we still kept that alternative in the analysis, knowing that a preference or even the whole community saying, hey, we do not want you to take these parking spaces, still might be the to take these parking spaces, still might be the location where we have to end up going to because of some engineering reason. So, the entire situation came down to the power drop location. If we could have gotten the power drop on Bison, this would have been a different situation, but we couldn't because of SoCal Edison.
And had you understood the power drops prior to offering up the locations to them?
We, we had some idea that there would be some, some alternative that we could use for SoCal Edison on some of the, the, the items. But when we got to the point where we could get SoCal Edison there on the site, by that point, it was so deep into or beyond COVID that their staff was strained and that the equipment that we would need, the, the different electrical equipment that we'd need to put in to use the other power drop locations would be 18 months or more out as far as trying to get it to the site. So, when, when we got to this last power drop location that was the one that we could use, that was based on the idea of doing something within the next six months or a year, because all the other locations either didn't have enough power and they would have to upgrade it, but they only could do that through their own engineering design and their own procurement of, of special transformers and things like that. So, what we were left with was this one power drop location.
If, if they were to come back to you at the time with a different location, would it not be feasible today?
If they came back to us with a different location...
At that time, at that time in place when this all was happening and they said we wanted to be over in the parking stalls, and then you had Edison come out there, would that, would that have been a plausible location today?
You, you mean the, I, I'm not sure I'm understanding the question.
If the organization, if the HOA had decided, you offered them up certain locations and they had picked a different one.
Right.
Would you have been able to make that one work?
No, no.
So, you offered, you offered up to them all the locations and it just so happened they just picked this one and this is the only one that's actually feasible. The other ones you offered them were not feasible?
They, they have never picked the location. It's us saying, this is the only one that's viable from an engineering and a constructability point of view and based on the power drops. There was never this moment where anyone from the HOA was saying, you know, take these five parking spaces or don't take these five parking spaces. It made no difference to our decision process.
If we asked you today to make a, to change the location so it's not impacting a, a resident, how much time would that add on to your project?
Two and a half, three years at this point in time because of all the changes that we would have to go through. It, it just would not, it would not fit within the timeframe of the mitigative measures that we're putting in.
Appreciate it. Thanks so much. Any staff, any comments? Oh, real quick, Commissioner Harris?
I'm, I'm not following the, the alternatives were offered, but then they were later realized that they wouldn't be feasible?
Correct, correct. As we were going through this, we had offered the alternatives at a time period where we thought that there may be more power drop locations. But by the time, which was about July, I think of 2022, by the time SoCal Edison finally gave back to us and said, no, your only location that will be feasible within the next two, three years is this one. By that time, all of this resolved down to just this one alternative.
And your drop is from Country Club?
Correct. It's on the other side of the road.
The drop is on Bell Court Drive, which is like two communities over. Yeah, we have to go through a different community to get to our treatment system location. So, it's, I think like 1,200 feet or something along those line.
Okay, Bell Courts. And then where does, just, I'm just curious, where's that run?
Where does...
You guys have to trench that over? How do you guys get it there?
Yeah. So, we have another treatment system that's going in, in that community. So, it's going to share a trench with that treatment system.
Okay. And that's the one immediately to the east?
Right.
Okay. And then where does that, does a trench run kind of between the two communities? On the back edge of the parking lot there?
It'll go under Country Club Drive with horizontal boring to the, the Fire Lane area. That's right next to where the treatment system building is.
Okay. So, it kind of comes straight east from Bell Court and then slightly north?
Yeah, it goes, so it's Bell Court Drive up through Cheshire Court or something and then to Hillsdale. And it goes around Hillsdale and then across Country Club.
Okay.
By the ways.
I mean, I, you know, I'm still not getting my head around how those parking spots don't work in the corner for the system, but, you know, I'm not the expert and I'll take your word for it. And I also understand that the HOA pushed back on it. So, can you tell us what happened on the last meeting after we met?
You, you mean the...
After we met, were there, was it just explained to the HOA? Because the story, we, when we were talking to your team, it was kind of like, hey, there are some other locations, but the HOA doesn't want it. Fair enough. And they kind of, they have discretion here a bit, you know? It's, it's kind of majority rules for them. That's how I understood our meeting last time. Is that not correct?
That, that's not correct.
Okay.
That, that, that's not correct. We did come up with the alternatives. And as I've said, what it came down to was the power drop issue. There, there was never this moment in which Enrique or somebody said, absolutely, you can't take these parking spaces. It was never an issue of that.
Okay. That, I, I think my, I misunderstood the last meeting, that there were no other feasible locations without it being completely our choice. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosin?
I keep hearing about the power drop and it's the only reason that these, that this one homeowner is impacted to the amount that it is. But something I don't think I've ever asked was, are you using a utility consultant or a electrical engineer to design this, or are you relying completely on Edison?
We're doing both. We're taking their information, but we also have our own electrical engineer that will sign and stamp the drawings. So, yes, it, it's, it's, I mean, we have to get the information from them as far as what's feasible.
I understand. Probably almost every one of us up here at some time of the year or other is in development and has worked with Edison. And there's no doubt that it can be difficult, but I just don't, I can't, I don't buy the, it's going to take three years. And this location is 98 feet from that location that we just talked about for Infeasible means it's harder.
So, so if I could, which, which one is 98 feet away? Which location?
I just scaled off your plan.
Are, are you talking about the southeast corner?
In this alternative three vapor extraction layout, parse of 10, it was a diagram that came from a previous.
Okay.
It was the one that I found that had a scale on it.
All right.
And the way that it scales off is 98 feet. But I guess I keep struggling with what I hear. So, that was all.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to direct it to staff. Staff, any comments, questions, clarifications?
We don't have any comments.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Can I finish my...
Sorry. The, the public hearing's closed. I think we're at a point now where we have enough information to go ahead and make a determination. I'll bring it back to the commission for, for, for comments and/or call for a motion. Commissioner Bartow, do you have any thoughts, comments? I'm going to go down the line, guys, so just...
Yeah. I guess, I can't say that, I think the same, on the electrical issue especially, the difference between the two locations that was just discussed. I, I kind of have the same question at work. I, I recognize the same kind of incongruity of it from a, at least from a power perspective, without discussion of the actual footprint issues. And I don't know how many seats, how many spots are there exactly. So, I'm not going to drill on that, I guess. But I, I guess generally, it, it, this feels like a, it's a, so there's a lot of stuff in discussion. There's health impacts, which as a planning commissioner, I don't think I'm particularly well qualified to, to give direction on. I, I'd have to rely on the Air Board and the other agencies that are really responsible for that. But again, there's just overall, it looks like a, a high impact on a specific residence for a general good. And that's, that's kind of the thing I, I kind of keep coming back to. And I don't know if Ford has really taken the opportunity to discuss those impacts with the residences. The fact that we're on an appeal like this indicates that if there had been, it wasn't really consummated, obviously. So, that, that's kind of, I, I wonder, it, it just, it feels like an HOA issue that's been elevated to the planning commission in a lot of ways. So, I, I, I'm struggling with this, but I, I'm sorry, I don't have a, a really good question, but that, that's...
That's good. Thank you. Commissioner Rosin?
So, I think the biggest issue here is that we all recognize this needs to get taken care of. The remediation needs to take place. And I think the second part of what I keep hearing is there was an opportunity to do what I'm going to say is the right thing a long time ago, and it didn't take place. And so, what we ended up with is this. And, you know, I just, I hear parking isn't the issue. And then the first thing I heard was, well, we, we decided we didn't want to hear because of parking. This is a really difficult one. I think that nobody here wants to hold up this process. But it's not, it wouldn't take three years. There's no guarantees that this building, by the way, is only going to be there one year. Remediation takes time. And something like this, I could easily see being there for two years. So, you know, I think that this needs to get taken care of, but I really was hoping that when this was allowed to go back and have an opportunity for the parties to review together, it clearly didn't happen. That didn't happen at all. And that's unfortunate. And it leaves us in a really bad position to know that that was how it got handled. So, I really feel for the appellant here, that they are being put in a very bad position.
Thank you. Commissioner Hirsch?
Commissioner Rosin, I echo your comments. This is a very difficult position for us to be put in. It clearly, in my opinion, is outside the purview of what the planning commission does. And I'm wondering if we're able to do this, if this is something that needs to be kicked up to city council. I, I don't want to drag out the process on this, but I, I don't really feel qualified to, to make a decision on this.
I think we, I think it's in our best interest to make a decision one way or another, whether it's denial or approval, but I don't think we can continue it any longer for the health and safety reasons.
Okay. That's correct. Either approval or denial would either be called up for review and/or appealed, but it, it is appropriate to make a decision here.
And, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask for clarification. If it's approval or denial, it could still be appealed then by an appellant up to city council.
Yeah. So, there are two available possibilities. One would be an appeal. The other would be a call for review by a member of the city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris?
Kind of echoing the same sentiments as my other commissioners here. I do feel like the HOA is railroading a couple people, but it is not our job to make valued judgments for them. And we have systems in place and we have boards that we elect and you have these processes. And you decide who, and you elect who's going to make the decision that's best for your community. I think they made a decision that was more convenient for the majority and not necessarily fair or the right thing to do. But I do think it may have been in their purview to do that for their community. And, you know, again, this needs to be done. And I, this is going back to, we're deciding if a permit should be approved. WSB has, I would say, done everything. I'm a little disappointed on the last meeting because I do think there was confusion on what we were told versus the way it was handled today and what we're being told today. I do think it's different than what I remember, unless my memory is totally wrong. But, you know, and HOA has a board. They make decisions. Not everyone likes it. And I, I'm disappointed in their decision. But, and I'd be very upset and I would consider appealing to city council. But from our purview, I don't know if I could vote against this permit.
Commissioner Langford?
Yeah, thanks. And I appreciate the time and attention, you know, the applicant, the appellant, everyone that's come out. I know it's, it's been a long road. My perspective is that the HOA is organized and deliberates the way that they're supposed to. They chose the spot in consultation with WSB, and I think that's great. They managed to externalize the effects of the placement to basically the residence of One Ford Road. It seems like the HOA, like no one's ever going to drive by it or see it after this, but One Ford Road will be impacted every day. They'll see it every day. They'll, you know, when the maintenance trucks, you know, come up and park on Country Club Road or Drive, they'll be impacted. So, I think it was very neighborly of them to let this thing go by. So, I think, you know, you guys owe them a beer, metaphorically speaking, because it was, you know, they're going to be impacted and no one else is, except for the appellants, of course. So, for those reasons, I'm inclined to, you know, vote to let this thing go. And, yeah.
Great. Just final words from me. All the, all the comments about the power drops and whatnot, you, I believe you were at the last meeting as the applicant. None of this was brought to our attention. This was all net new. A big part of me, my BS meter's going off about that, to put it as eloquently as my, my other colleagues here. I think that the HOA and you guys pushed in this location because it was only going to affect three versus affecting 18, 20 people. That's a little disappointing. But the net, net of it is, we have a health and safety issue. There really is at this ti, place in time. If, if, if what you're telling me is accurate, we can't extend this any longer because it's going to affect more people. So, for, for that reason, I, you know, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve this. I don't want to, but I will. I'll make a motion to approve, where are we? PA 2022-0180 as drafted.
Well, second.
Right. Call for a vote.
The motion carries forward, too, with Commissioners Klostermeier and Harris voting no.
Okay, great. Moving on. Next item we have is item number three, the Miller Residence. Site location, 22 Bay Island. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes, we do. Jenny will take care of it. Oh, you got it? Good, good. Here we go.
Thank you, Chair Elmore and commissioners. Again, my name is Jenny Tran and I am the assistant planner for this project, the Miller Residence, for a COSO development permit located at 22 Bay Island. This project is for a COSO development permit. If the proposal also includes a parking management plan and an increase in height up to 33 feet. I do want to mention that this is not a variance and the use permit for Bay Island does allow a request for an increase in height, but that will be touched on further. This shows Bay Island, it is located in Newport Harbor and it has 24 building sites. Bay Island is accessed from a pedestrian bridge located on Edgewater Avenue and Island Avenue. And the subject property is located just past the pedestrian bridge as shown Bay Island is unique in nature. It, although it does have the 24 building sites as previously stated, the island as a whole is actually one legal lot. And the dashed blue lines show the property lines of Bay Island. And the area shaded in brown show the 24 building sites on Bay Island. The building sites are not actually lot lines. They are... The building sites are not actually lot lines, they are building site lines, and that discrepancy will also be clarified further as the development standards are based on these building site lines. The development standards for Bay Island must comply with Title 20, which is the standard zoning code for Newport Beach, and in this case, those standards are outlined in the approved use permit for Bay Island. Because this property is located in the coastal zone, it must also comply with Title 21, which is the local coastal program implementation plans development standards. So development must comply with both Title 20 and Title 21, and again, those development standards will be discussed further. So the use permit, this would be the Title 20 development standards. These are the setbacks indicated in the use permit, and they are measured from the building site lines rather than the property lines of Bay Island. Most notably of these development standards is the height. The use permit does allow 24 feet for flat roofs and 29 feet for slope roofs by right. However, within the use permit, it does allow an increase to 28 feet for flat roofs and 33 feet for slope roofs with Planning Commission approval. So again, it's not a variance request, it is within the use permit to allow for the increase in height subject to Planning Commission approval. As shown here, for the height increase, the project is proposing the 28-foot max flat, which is what the blue line shows, as well as the blue line showing the 33-foot max slope. And the proposed project is just shy of that 33 feet. Within the past 10 years, about five coastal development permits have been proposed for Bay Island, and this would be number five. Of these five, this is the third request for a height increase, so this is not an uncommon request. The past two proposals for the height increase that were approved by, were approved by the Planning Commission, and the other two coastal development permits that did not request the height increase were also approved at the zoning administrative level and were not reviewed by the Planning Commission. This also shows the side of the structure. This particular building site is a slope lot with the existing topography slope being about 7.5%. The zoning code does have a procedure to measure the height on sloped lots, so these blue lines show the approximate illustration of the slope of the lot and how the height is measured, where it generally follows the topography. And this elevation shows again that the proposed structure is just shy of the 33-foot max height for a slope roof. In accordance with Title 21, the local coastal program implementation plan or the IP development standards, it views Bay Island itself as one legal lot rather than the individual building sites, and the development must comply with these standards as well. The setbacks for the Title 21 development standards is a 20-foot front setback, and this is measured from the water of the dotted lines that were shown in the previous slide, and the proposed project complies with that front setback. Most notably of these development standards is the parking requirement. It requires three onsite parking spaces in a garage where the applicant's proposing two offsite parking spaces in an existing parking garage at a 501 West Bay Avenue and one onsite for golf cart storage. The reason for this is the Bay Island does not allow vehicular access across a pedestrian bridge, so this is typical for Bay Island for the parking spaces to be an existing offsite parking garage and one onsite for golf cart storage. And this, the applicant's requesting the adjustment to the offsite parking requirements in a parking management plan. So for the parking, as we, to reiterate, the use permit requires two spaces in an offsite structure, and the implementation plan requires three spaces onsite. So the parking management plan proposes the two spaces in an offsite existing structure, and that parking garage is an existing parking garage dedicated to the residents of Bay Island as well as the one golf cart space onsite. So this map shows the location of the existing parking garage at 501 West Bay Avenue. As previously stated, this is an existing parking structure that provides two spaces for each building site on Bay Island as well. And then the red line shows where residents would park their car in the existing garage and use, utilize golf carts to cross the pedestrian bridge onto Bay Island where they would park their one golf cart. And this is typical for all the residents of Bay Island. There was a discrepancy found later in the project. On the left is the building site map that is part of the approved use permit, and the right is the proposed site plan. So the lines in blue show the building site lines, and in particular, we're looking at Building Site 22, and the dash line shows the maximum allowed building footprint. This map in particular shows the allowances for minor structure encroachments. Minor structure encroachments would be any accessory structures less than 42 inches in height, and the yellow area shaded shows where those encroachments are allowed. As you can see on the left, the yellow area is measured from the building footprint, which includes the four-foot required setback in the front. Essentially, that means that minor structure encroachments are allowed 11 feet past the building site lines. As you see on the right, the proposed site plan measured the 15-foot minor structure encroachments from the building site lines rather than the building footprint, which means the proposed project does include four feet additional, four feet more of allowed minor structure encroachments. This will need to be corrected by the applicant, but because these are minor structures, staff felt it was appropriate to include an additional condition of approval indicating that minor structure encroachments beyond the building site line shall be consistent with use permit number UP 3618, including the associated building site map. That would mean pulling back those minor setback encroachments by four feet, and staff also feels it's appropriate to address this correction in plan check. Staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, find this project exempt from secret pursuant to Class III, and to adopt Resolution Number PC 2023-024, approving this coastal development permit. Thank you, Commissioners. I'm available for any questions and discussions.
Thank you. Great presentation. Commissioners, any questions? Of staff? Yeah, Commissioner Rosin?
Thank you, Jenny. I appreciate that presentation. It occurred to me just a second ago, and I probably should have had it happen before, but the building for the parking, it was probably built before the 4,000-square-foot requirement, and it was, and because of that, there's only two parking spaces allocated, and that's why there's only two, and so it kind of is what it is. So you put a golf cart here, and you solve the problem. Is that a fair statement?
That is actually very fair. The issue is, so from a Title 20 standpoint, you just have to comply with that use permit, two spaces per. Now, the codes were changed in 2010 to require a three-car garage for these larger homes, and so they've got a nonconforming privilege to build that pursuant to Title 20. Excuse me. But the issue is, Title 21 doesn't actually recognize the use permit, and so a three-car garage is required. They solved this with the golf cart parking on the site, and so this is a traditional design that we've done through the zoning administrator and the Planning Commission since 2010.
Do you have any water?
I think I've been drinking too much water, actually.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none. Commissioners, any ex parte communications? Start with Commissioner Bartow.
None.
None?
None.
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 Okay. At this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is the applicant here? Do they have any words they want to say or a presentation of any sort? Hi, state your name, please.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Thompson. I'm here on behalf of Brandon Architects as the applicant. We don't have anything to address, but mind that, that small issue of the four feet, we have no issue setting back that minor encroachment and picking that up during plan checks so that we do comply with the 15 feet from the face of the building.
Great. And while I have you, do you agree with the conditions of approval?
Yes.
Great. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or the architect? None? Okay. Anybody from the, thank you so much. Anybody from the audience wish to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commissioners for a motion or a deliberation.
I'll make a motion to approve PA 2023-0017, 22 Bay Island.
Second?
I'll second.
Great. It's a call for vote. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. Item number four, Newport Place Plan Community Development Plan Amendment. Site location generally bounded by MacArthur Boulevard, Jamboree Road, Birch Street, and Bristol Street North. I believe staff, Jim, you have a...
Yes.
Do we have a, someone's going to recuse?
Just give me a moment.
Yes, I need to recuse.
I'll have to recuse as well.
Yes, I believe the basis is a potential source of income issue or business management issue based on one of your partners.
Yes, thank you.
Don't miss us too much. All right. Jim, you want to proceed with your presentation?
Certainly, Chair Elmore. Certainly, Chair Elmore. So this is a public hearing to modify the Newport Place Plan Community text related to affordable housing inclusionary percentage. First of all, I want to point out that this does come to us from the City Council. This was directed by Councilmember Weigand with the full support of the City Council. The amendment is fairly simple, and it does change the minimum affordable housing percentage from 30% to 15%. Real quick, Newport Place is the area in red. This is up in the airport area, just north of the 73 freeway, bounded by MacArthur, Jamboree, and Birch Street. Newport Place was established in the early 70s for office park and industrial uses. Uses have evolved over time, as I'm sure most of you have been in this area. More general service, retail offices are still there, restaurants and auto dealership, very, very few industrial uses are left. Housing, of course, is the issue of the day, and in 2012, the city adopted a residential overlay, and I'll show you a map momentarily, and that was pursuant to the fifth element, I'm sorry, the fifth cycle housing element. So this is 2012, and we had to provide opportunities for residential uses, and that this is the area that we provided it. Now, that overlay does require 30% of the residential units in a project to be restricted to lower-income households for 30 years, and it's really our only inclusionary policy within the community. So this is that area. Again, that is MacArthur on the right-hand side, 73 on the bottom, and Birch on the other side there. So the shaded areas is the existing residential overlay. And again, 30% is the standard. We're changing that to 15%, and that's really the only thing that's changing here. It is consistent with the housing element. It does affirmatively further fair housing. It reduces a potential impediment. If you think about a 30% inclusion, it does strain the finances of a project quite a bit. In fact, we did study this with Kaiser Marston and Associates in 2022, and the results of that analysis show that, you know, it is feasible to require 15% when you use a density bonus. And so this request is consistent with that analysis. A higher percentage might easily be inconsistent or infeasible financially for projects. So we do believe this is exempt from environmental review. It's not a project. No development is authorized. Again, recommended actions are to conduct a public hearing. Again, the resolution before you this evening is a resolution making a recommendation to the City Council and only that. Next steps after this, assuming the, it is, that action is taken, Airport Land Use Commission July 20th, and then City Council July 25th is where we go from here. And staff is available for any questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Klostermeier?
How do you define lower affordable housing? Is that tied to a certain level of AMI?
Yes, yes, it is. I believe the overlay actually, those definitions are established by state law, and lower income is 80% AMI, or area median income.
Okay, so essentially, it's the same level of affordability at an AMI level. We're just reducing the required amount of affordable housing from 30% of the project down to 15.
Exactly. We're not changing the affordability requirement. So you could actually do very low income or low income, but you couldn't do moderate income or to satisfy the requirement.
And just, I happen to have in front of me the AMIs for the very low. When we adopted the density bonus ordinance, was about 67,000 for a four-person family. Low income was 108 for a four-person family, and then moderate was 142 for a four-person family. That kind of gives you a ballpark.
Okay. And if a developer were to propose a project here and use the state density bonus, would they then, they would exceed the 15% of required affordability because of the density bonus? Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Maybe, maybe not. It really depends. Under density bonus law or certain parameters, you can provide as little as 5% and then actually get a density bonus. So in this particular instance, they might achieve, they probably need to use a higher density bonus, if you will, to achieve a minimum of 15%. It's readily done, and we expect that projects will utilize the density bonus law in order to make their project pencil out.
Yeah, and that is a state law. That is not something, the state says, this is the state density bonus, these are the levels, the developer may use this, and city, you must comply.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Langford?
Yes, Mr. Campbell, our interpretation is that this is compliant with our housing element. Will HCD agree with that?
I believe that they will. This action will be reported to HCD with our next annual report, and we'll see what they say.
Great. Any other questions of staff? Okay, any ex parte communications? Commissioner Bartow?
No.
None?
None.
None.
Great. Okay, this time I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Does anybody from the comment, excuse me, anybody from the audience wish to comment on this item?
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Moser. First thing I would point out is that the staff has made it appear the issue before you is either to approve or deny changing the affordability from requirement from 30% to 15%. This was on the consent calendar at the council meeting, which means there was no discussion actually of the item, and I would point out the resolution that you have here as an attachment to the staff report, the council as a whole didn't actually order you to consider that. Instead, it says that Commissioner, Councilmember Weigand requested an item to reduce the inclusionary percentage from 13 to 15. The council initiated an amendment related to the minimum affordability percentage, and the actual operative part of the resolution says the council hereby initiates an amendment to the Newport Place Plan Community Development Plan to lower the minimum affordable percentage of residential overlay, which could be interpreted to mean you were just, by the whole council being asked, should it be lowered, and if so, what should it be lowered to? And I would point out, following up on Commissioner Langford's question, it's not, the resolution includes on its second page, a finding, it says it's not required, but it suggests that this will improve the city's chance of meeting its REDA requirement by lowering this requirement. I would think it actually is a possibility it will create an inconsistency with our housing element because it says, somewhere here, it says that the amount in Newport Place would be like 20, or in the airport area would be 25% of the city's planned housing capacity. That capacity is something like 9,000 units that we're planning for with the assumption that that will produce enough affordable housing, but I think that is assuming that we will be building more than 15% in the city as a whole, and if we don't require 15% anyway, have we identified enough sites? Because I think all of those sites that we think can enough sites? Because I think all of those sites that we think can hold nine thousand houses have to be at least fifteen percent or more to meet our affordability requirement. So I think you're creating a problem by doing this. And then, the only other comments I had, there's a number of grammatical typographical errors in the resolution. The only one I think might be important is in Statement of Fact number three, where it says the housing units of two thousand five seventy-seven are in the airport area. I think that should say it's in the airport area in fire runs, not just in the airport area itself, if we're trying to say what the housing element says. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Chair Elmore and commissioners. My name is Nancy Scarborough. The staff report that we're referred to is the Kaiser Marston Inclusionary Housing Financial Evaluation. It was done in two thousand and twenty-two. It recommended inclusionary requirements on a citywide basis, including the airport area, would be able to support fifteen percent very-low income units. And that was in projects of fifty or more apartment units. Those were rentals. That's on page five of their three hundred and twenty-some-odd-page report. It's very long. I've read it. The typical... it states that the typical developer would choose to set aside fifteen percent of their homes as very low in order to receive the allowed, state-mandated, allowed fifty percent density bonus. Fifteen percent is the mathematically most efficient, most advantageous percentage to use to get the fifty percent density bonus. If you refer to the final HCD housing element that we submitted to HCD, Appendix B, page B nine, there's a chart, and it tells by area how many homes in very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. The math for this, if you do the math, the report attributes that there would be two thousand five hundred and seventy-seven units in the airport area. Seven hundred and seventy-three were supposed to be, are supposed to be, low and very low. That's thirty percent. In other words, the report that we submitted, our final housing element, assumes that we will accomplish thirty percent affordable. If we reduce that to fifteen percent, we actually need to build or plan for more units. So Mr. Mosher's comment a minute ago means that we would need additional sites in order to do that. The total development, if we were to reduce it to fifteen percent, if you do the math to figure that out, it comes out instead of eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven for the total development capacity for the entire city, if you do the math to reduce that to fifteen percent, it's twenty thousand units. So it's almost double by taking less. HCD did approve our housing element with thirty percent low and very low income units, and since thirty percent affordable units add eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty-seven housing units, I'm not sure that it's really in the best interest of the city to lower that to fifteen percent and try and find a place for twenty thousand units. Thank you for listening, and Commissioner Klaustmer, I just realized today that you are leaving. I don't mean to schmooze, but thank you for your balanced judgment, and we'll miss you. Miss you. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seen none. Staff, would you like to respond to any of the comments that were made?
Certainly. A couple things. You know, I think the notion that... we did a study with Kaiser Marston, and the indication is that thirty percent is largely infeasible for most projects. That doesn't mean there isn't a unicorn out there that could make that happen. And Nancy is correct in that, you know, arena requirements are quite steep. We have a lot of units, and we've obviously planned a very large buffer. And... but when fifty percent of the units need ultimately be lower-income units, you know, it's a very difficult challenge to do. But I do believe that if we do a thirty percent inclusion, you know, we're actually putting a hurdle in front of projects, most projects, if not almost all projects. And so, based on that financial analysis, to eliminate that impediment down to fifteen percent, it's actually more than you might otherwise receive if projects come in with the straight density bonus. You know, most developers are looking to do the minimum necessary to get by, because it affects the performer quite remarkably. And so, by going to fifteen percent, we've eliminated impediment, but it's actually more housing than they might otherwise give us. They might suggest, well, you know what? I'd like a density bonus of twenty percent, please, and I'm going to do five percent very-low income. And that would be a perfectly good project that would come forward, and actually then we would get less affordable housing as a result. So I think that this fifteen percent is supportable based on the Kaiser Marston analysis, and eliminates an impediment and actually boosts future production in the Newport Place area above what you might achieve with the density bonus law on its own. And so, for that, for those reasons, we feel comfortable in making this recommendation. Are there challenges ahead to get the numbers that HCD would like us to achieve? Well, we have planned for it. We have a certified housing element, and it's up to the marketplace to do its very, very best. I think this change will allow us and achieve affordable housing production, and we won't be the city that doesn't have any affordable housing production. That's clearly what we don't want to do. Again, I think this is a good balance for the community, and it'll provide more affordable housing in the airport area than we would otherwise achieve, and eliminates that impediment. For that reason, for those reasons, we recommend the action before you.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners. Do you have any dialogue or feel free to make a motion?
Just recommendation to staff, and you're probably going to do this anyway, but by lowering the percentage, you have a higher probability that stuff's going to get built. Because if we add a hundred percent requirement, zero is going to get built, ninety, all the way down to thirty. If it's thirty, zero gets built. If we're fifteen, now stuff's going to get built. So now we have a higher likelihood, higher probability. So for that reason, I like the direction that the city council gave us this, and inclined to vote yes.
Want to make a motion?
Yes, I would like to. I'd like to make a motion to... for PA two zero two three dash zero zero eight two, to approve as presented.
We have a second?
I will second.
And real quick, just to add to that, do we want to include the grammatical change that Mr. Mosher pointed out?
I don't think it changes the substance.
Okay, great. Let's call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Okay, moving on. We'll get our commissioners back in here, and we'll move on to item number five. And that item number five is Newport Village Plan Community Development Plan Amendment. Site location, one five five zero Avocado Avenue, at the corner of Avocado Avenue and San Joaquin Hills Road. And once they sit down, we'll have staff go ahead with their presentation.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Joslyn Perez. I'm with the Planning Division. The next public hearing item for your consideration is an amendment to the Newport Village Plan Community Development Plan to add recreational uses to Area One. So where in the world is the Newport Village Plan Community, also known as PC twenty-seven? PC twenty-seven is bounded to the north by San Joaquin Hills Drive, to the east by MacArthur Boulevard, and to the south by Coast Highway, and to the east by Avocado Avenue. The PC twenty-seven has five distinct land uses that include a mix of retail, open space, governmental. The proposed amendment only applies to Area One. Area One is highlighted in blue, and that is the OCTA Transit Facility. Zooming in, we have the Transit Facility in blue there. It is a zoned PC twenty-seven and has a general plan land use designation of public facilities, which includes schools, cultural institutions, any type of facility that serves the public. The site is primarily bounded by major roadways. However, there is a quite a diverse mix of uses surrounding the area, and I'd like to highlight that this abuts other public-serving facilities such as the Dog Park, Civic Center Park, where we are today at the Civic Center, and the library. Area One, as I mentioned, is the... developed with the OCTA Transit Facility. The facility was designed and entitled in nineteen eighty-eight. Ridership has changed over the last thirty-five years. OCTA has noticed that the parking lot is not as fully utilized as it was historically, and in response, city council initiated this code amendment earlier this year to look at adding recreational uses to this site. Currently, the only allowed uses for this site are a transit facility and signage, essentially for the transit facility. The amendment is pretty straightforward. The existing text, PC text, is in black, and the amended text is in red there. As you can see, it includes recreational uses, including sport courts, snack shacks, any incidental seating, basically anything to support a recreational use. There is no project attached to this amendment. This is just a change to allow future flexibility. The amendment does not create any nonconformities. It doesn't compel the site to be redeveloped. It just adds flexibility for this site. Staff recommends conducting a public hearing. Findings amendment not a project subject to CEQA. Any future development plans or implementation will require review at that time. And staff recommends adopting a resolution recommending city council approve the amendment. Next steps would involve the amendment being a public hearing at city council, and if that is approved, a second reading. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions and discussion.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Seen none. Any experte communications?
None.
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 Okay. And this time, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? If they do, please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Chair Elmore, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, a couple of very minor grammatical corrections to the resolution. On handwritten page thirteen, Statement of Fact One, or I guess it should be one point one, describing where the planned community is. I think it should say generally bounded by San Joaquin Hills rather than bound. And on the second page, under the required findings, which it says there is no findings required, the second sentence there, I believe, is supposed to say neither the PC twenty-one development plan, chapter twenty, blah, 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 requires any findings to be made. And then, it's not a grammatical error, but on the final page, number three, handwritten, page fifteen, it's mentioning that we have a general plan policy promoting more recreational facilities, and it says Area One is large enough area to develop a field or a court. I'm really wondering whether you could put an entire sports field in that area and still have a transit center. So maybe it's large enough for a court or a couple. I'm not sure it's large enough for an entire sports field. And then, the substantive point I would make, I don't think there's anybody here from the Harborview Homes, but they're generally very concerned about lighting, and that paragraph is saying that we need a lot of lighted facilities for after-work sports leagues. And you will find there's a minor revision to a provision in the planned community text, which is on handwritten, page thirty-one, about lighting. And the current standard is that there is supposed to be minimal lighting to avoid impacts to those people in Harborview Hills for buildings and parking lots, and we're adding sports courts to that. But if you look further down, it says about the third sentence, that the nighttime lighting shall be limited to that necessary for security and shielded from the adjacent residential area. So I'm wondering if we quite understand whether these sports courts, how they are going to be operating during the nighttime. Are they going to be brightly lit? Are they going to influence or affect the neighbors across MacArthur from this location or not? And then, finally, we have a couple of things that are consistent with the general plan. The current use permit calls for there to be, I think, seventy-six parking spaces or something like that there. I don't see how taking the parking spaces away is consistent with our directives in the general plan to promote alternate modes of transportation like this. So I think there's both consistencies and inconsistencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, staff, any comments for the record?
What I might point out about night lighting, that is really referring to security lighting, overnight lighting. So we do anticipate lighting, if the sports courts were ever to be built there. I do agree, maybe a field isn't the right word there, and we can take that out. But, you know, so there would be lighting of the courts, you know, during the evening hours, and we would examine that pursuant to the criteria here. The director has the ability to dim those lighting as a public facility. You know, it might be open until eight, nine, ten o'clock at night, and then it would be turned off. And we would make sure that that review process, if there were to be a future project, addresses those questions. In terms of the parking, we recognize that the use permit for the transit facility does specify a number of spaces. There isn't a part of the amendment is to reevaluate that at that future time. So then, we would look at what is the need of the parking for the transit facility, and what is the need of parking for the potential recreational use, and then make sure we have adequate parking. And that's what the amendment requires us to do at the time that a project actually comes in. One thing I might note is I did actually meet with OCTA today, not about this project, but about this site. And what I heard today is that their surveys show this parking lot is only utilized about thirty percent right now. Now, that could change over time as time goes by, but I just wanted to give you that piece of information for your consideration. So that's all the comments I have.
Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Any comments or a motion? Commissioner Rosin?
Just a real quick question. Is it a possibility that OCTA is looking at this as surplus property?
There are exemptions that could and should apply in this scenario, I believe. Yeah.
Any other... Make a motion to approve. We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Langford?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second. Call for a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on. Item number six, which is a discussion item. This is about new visitors serving accommodations, MU W two and MU CB fifteen Street. The site location is various properties located in Lido Village, Canary Village, McFadden Square, and mixed-use areas on Fifteenth Street, Agate Avenue, and Marine Avenue. I believe we have...
Yeah, Chair Elmore, I'll be recusing myself on this item due to parcels owned in part by my employer within the subject area.
Right. Jack, you can go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Chair Elmore. So this is an item, as indicated, we're studying visitor accommodations in the MU W two zone and the MU CB fifteenth zones. This comes to us with the city council's direction. I cannot recall which council member brought this one forward. I think it was Mr. O'Neil, and then it was in...
I think it was Mr. O'Neill, and then it was endorsed by the full City Council. And they're asking the Planning Commission to study code amendments for additional visitor accommodations within these two zones. So here's a map of those zones. It's in your staff report. The yellow is the MUCV 15th Street, again Cannery Village and 15th Street on the peninsula. And then the MU W2 is largely in the McFadden Square area, the Lido Marina Village area, Agad Avenue, and Marine Avenue on Bambal Island, and then one small property right here at the Anchorage Apartments, or just adjacent to the Anchorage Apartments on Coast Highway. So, little background, these particular zones were created in 2010 with the comprehensive update of the zoning code, which was done to implement the 2006 general plan update. So these are new mixed-use zones. So both zones allow traditional hotels, motels, and bed and breakfasts. Conditionally used permits are required. It's fairly common, and so both zones do provide those opportunities. What the zones don't do is they don't allow short-term rentals of residential units. So just a bit of background, prior to 2010, the zoning code allowed short-term rentals at any unit in the city, but not in the R1 zone. That was prohibited back in, boy, 2004. So that, this is really the only missing opportunity for visitor accommodations in these areas. So we've got a recommendation tonight. We're not solving the issue tonight, not discussing it more so than we have, although we can field questions if you like. We're asking the Commission to either establish a Planning Commission ad hoc subcommittee to study this with staff, or to direct staff to prepare a report with code amendments. I'm partial to taking the second option. We can bring this back to the Commission fairly readily for your consideration and input, and then we can move this on to council.
Great. Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Okay. Seeing none. This is not a public hearing item, but the Commission will take public comments at this time. Does anybody from the audience want to discuss this topic?
Chair Elmore, members of the Commission, my name is still Jim Mosher, and I expressed my comments about this in writing, so I don't want to belabor those, but in my opinion, with this item, the direction from the City Council is rather vague because this not only was not, it was not even a consent calendar item. It was actually an item on which they took a straw vote to have an agenda item about it. And I quoted in writing here exactly what it was that they took a straw vote on, and I personally do not know what they want. I thought it might have something to do with changing the rules about timeshares. Staff thinks it has something to do about allowing short-term rentals, but it also mentions it's to address residential development of 20 or more residential units under a common ownership, and that doesn't make much sense. And you're going to have 20 short-term rental permits allowed in some building? It does not make sense. So I really think the proper thing you should do is ask the staff to do what the Council asks, which is to put it on the City Council agenda so that they can discuss and give you direction what it is that they are wanting changed about the zoning code. I don't think you have enough information here to go on, so you might just be going down some blind alley that is not what the majority of the Council wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Seeing none, thank you for your participation. I'll go ahead and bring this back for a discussion with the Planning Commission. I personally think that if I was to review a staff report, that that would be the information sufficient for me to make a determination on, go for it on this. I don't necessarily believe in ad hoc committee. Warren's an ad hoc committee. That's my two cents, so that's, I would be in support of what staff is looking for, and that is a report from them. Any other thoughts?
I agree. Let's give staff an opportunity to ferret this out.
Commissioner Bartow?
I agree also. I would, of course, expect the staff to try to divine what the Council was getting at, and I'll rely on them to try and do that.
Great. Do you want to call for a vote? Does anybody want to make a motion? Commissioner Bartow?
I'll make a motion to instruct the staff to prepare a report focused on the topic that will be reviewed by the Commission at a future date.
Great. I'll second that.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Moving on. Staff and Commissioner items. Number seven, motion for reconsiderations. Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Number, item number eight, report by the Community Development Director. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Chair Elmore. I'm going to go ahead and let you know that we have a meeting on July 6. We have three items, unless the third item on the list gets pushed to the July 20th meeting, and get a little behind in that one. But that is our annual meeting of officers. Between now and then, the City Council will appoint, you know, two new Commissioners. Mr. Rosin, you're up for reappointment, and then Ms. Klaasde Meyer, the Council will appoint somebody for your seat, so we'll have a full commission at the next meeting. And it is our annual meeting, so we'll elect the Officers as we do every first meeting in July. So beyond next meeting, we do, what you have before you shows no items on July 20th. Well, okay, between the time I printed this and today, we do have a couple items coming forward on that meeting, so I do anticipate a meeting on July 20th with at least three items that have ripened and are ready to come forward to you. So I apologize, I don't have those items here, but I do expect a meeting on July 20th. One other item of note, the City Council did approve the VE Zone Amendment that you folks saw recently. They did make some changes to that. They did not provide the same level of encroachment into the side yards that the Commission saw. So, but they did take a different approach, but that item did get approved, so I think that should facilitate those buildings there. But beyond that, that's my report, and...
Great. Thank you. Does anybody from the audience want to comment on the report? Seeing none. Any requests for excused absences from Commissioners? Commissioner Harris, if that's right.
I don't, but I did, I think this is the last opportunity. I want to thank Commissioner Klaasde Meyer for your time and being very welcoming, Andrew Expertise, and I think you were very thoughtful in your deliberations, and appreciate it very much, and hopefully see you in the water. Good luck.
Yeah, I'm going to request August 17th, I wire for excused absence.
Commissioner Bartow?
I may, there's a high likelihood I will not be able to attend the July 6th organizational meeting, so...
Commissioner Rosin?
I may have an issue on July 20th.
Commissioner Langford?
No issues, but also want to thank Commissioner Klaasde Meyer for her years of service, and I'll save the mushy stuff for off-camera.
All right. You will be missed. Meeting adjourned at, what are we, at 7:58?